Roll call, please.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
President.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Tavallaro.
Here.
Mayor Ken Palphini.
I am here. Thanks, Sandy. Item, first item on the agenda, ceremonial. I see one of them just walked in, I think. Presentation from the Community Support Collaboration to present the Siskiyou 211 system and request a funding support.
He's on the phone. He just walked out.
Oh, did he walk out?
He's always there.
We'll have to wait for the end.
He'll be done in a minute. You always have to wait. Welcome, Kurt.
Well, so did you just call our item just now?
Yeah.
While I was on the phone with our executive director, who's about three blocks away.
[laughing]
She's got some handouts for you, and it may be useful for you to look at them. Do you mind passing us for a few minutes?
Uh, I guess we could come back.
Is that possible to do?
Yeah. We can...
Otherwise, I'll just launch into it.
We'll go to...
But she's got a PowerPoint she can hand you in just a moment.
Okay, let's go to public comment then, and we'll come back.
Thank you.
We'll go to public comment. Now's the time in the meeting that we will hear from our constituents on items that are under our purview, but we cannot take any action on them tonight.
Okay. You want my name?
Of course.
I know.
I would just go name in town is okay with me.
Sherry Young. 218 Main and 242 Main.
Okay.
I'm basically here to find out, it was brought to my husband's and my attention, that this additional increase in sales tax for the cannabis distributor, who is one of, who is our renter, is going to come into play, and I'm questioning, do you have any status on what, can we stop that? I'm one of the few businesses in town that has supplied you with a business that's feeding our coffers, and I'm very, very concerned, they pay enough tax with the addition, excuse me, with the additional 10 percent? If you drive her out of business, it's another empty building on Main Street.
Well, I think, I'll, can I respond to that even though it's public comment?
No discussion.
Not a long discussion. They need to read the tax. The tax is zero to 10 percent. We have not established a rate yet, so at this point, zero is zero.
Okay. Do you know when you're gonna have that discussion?
We have not set a date to even implement that yet.
Okay, so it could be the...
But when we do, we will advise everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sherry.
Let's move on to the next item.
Thanks, Kim. Jim Striegel, 2601 North Alt Stage Road. As you know, I've been hoping to have another Weed Fest concert to raise money for the community I was, it was recommended to me to wait a year. Ray Strack said, Jimmy, it's too soon. Give it a year, give the community a chance to see how well the legalization goes, see that, you know, there's not gonna be any problems, and then try and do it next year. But in my youthful exuberance, I saw what happened in Sacramento with the Cannabis Cup. They had 20,000 people, they raised 300,000 for the city, no arrests, no problems. I thought, well, if this works for Sacramento, this would be great in weed. But apparently, I'm getting a little pushback from, getting, get no support from the chamber, no support from Parks and Recreation. Chief Nicholas has suggested that public consumption is illegal. I really wanted to have a peaceful, profitable, and fun event with public consumption. I think it's too soon. I wasn't gonna have another Weed Fest because I'm running on fumes. I'm really tired, kind of for health reasons. But I thought, well, this could be a lot of fun. Let's try this again. I'll give it a shot. I've had a nice organizational committee. I've appreciated your input to the committee, but I've decided we're gonna put it off till next year. I don't want to, I know, I give the impression a lot that I'm pushing the legalization thing, the cannabis thing, but I don't wanna push. I just want to gently nudge and lovingly educate the public. And I look forward to the day when consuming cannabis at Carnival or at a concert or at a nightclub is as common as drinking a margarita, or, and that day is coming, but it's, things move at their own pace, and I've learned that politics is the art of compromise. So I'm gonna step back this year. We're not gonna have the Weed Fest. I was really hoping to have the arts and crafts part of the Weed Fest expose all the arts and crafts vendors to the empty storefronts downtown. I really would love to see those, on this end of Main Street, those empty storefronts fill up with art galleries, craft galleries, gift shops. It would've been a good opportunity for that. We're gonna, I think we're gonna put it off till next 4:20 at least, and then maybe have a Harvest Festival later next year. And I'd like to compliment you on the time clock on the wall. That's a nice addition. Nice addition. It's very cool. Anyway, I thank the council for their open-mindedness on the cannabis situation, for all your hard work. We're all flying by the seat of our pants on this situation. I really believe it could be a major indicator, a major contributor to our economy. And also, remind everybody, next week, on Tuesday at 6 o'clock, we're having a, here, a company come up to talk about business downtown and how to improve our downtown business community, expand, and help the businesses. Unfortunately, Tuesday at 6 o'clock is when I play this, at my gig in Mount Shasta, so unless I play hooky for my gig, I won't be able to make it. But I've talked to the guy who's gonna be here. I'm gonna give him a tour of town. I'll take him up, show him my place, have him overlook the town. He's from Mississippi, so he's got no idea about weed. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna show him, and he sounds, he's a young guy from Ole Miss, just graduated, and I think he'll, it'll be a good conference educational experience for him and for the town, and I hope it works out good.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Thanks, you guys.
All right.
Elizabeth Taber, 242 Main Street. So is item E on the agenda tonight, just basically that you're voting and adopting the passing? Okay.
That's correct.
Just making sure.
Okay.
I try to come in at least once council meeting, kinda give an update, you know, with such a new business in town, so I'll try to do this under three minutes, or 2:42. I don't know if everyone's aware, as of July 1st, again, the state regulations for cannabis retail cannabis businesses changed again. They're now under another six months of emergency regulations, and what that means is there's possibly could be changes again come January of '19. I can go into a long report to you that I had typed out as to the effects of this, but we had to dispose of and be rid of a lot of noncompliant, under the new complacency of July 1st regulations, as of June 30th. There is a major shortage of all varieties of products in the cannabis industry right now in California. Some stores in Sacramento have either closed, or they've temporarily shut down to not be able to have product on their shelves and pay their employees and so forth. We're noticing that up this far north. Times are very, very tough. If I could've looked in a crystal ball back when all this took place and realized what could happen come July 1st, I may have rethought the process. But we're muddling through it. This is, this is a very, very trying time in the retail industry, in the cannabis world. There's 11 laboratories in California that are licensed, that are backlog for months. Outdoor cultivation hasn't even taken place in legal farmers right now, so that product isn't even available, which is a much cheaper product to the consumer. Outside of here, whatever, if you wanna stop by, there's, there's some really detrimental things happening right now. Oregon had a problem with too much, and now California has a problem, not enough, believe it or not. So the black market is thriving, which we definitely didn't want to have happen. Taxation is a factor. Product availability is a factor right now, so maybe when we get ready to talk about that tax, we might kinda look at, in the next few months, of what happens in the cannabis industry with these new regulations changing. I believe I talked to Justin and let him know that this has happened as well, but there's some really crucial times that I believe none of us business owners, even for sale, happening, especially right now. Tourist season's gonna end next month, you know, school starts, so we're kind of, we haven't even had a winter's month here in weed, so we don't know what to expect. I just hope that we can take all these factors into considerations and have a really good assessment, communication, when this comes about, because I can't stress enough how much right now is very, very detrimental in cannabis retail. It's very, very scary.
I'll stop by. We'll have a conversation.
Thank you.
Liz?
Yes.
Is it the, the other packaging and all that, is that what got hold?
Um, all the packaging regulations have changed. Prop 65 wording has to be on all products now. It has to go through what's called a Phase 2 testing, which is down to microbial. Products that were harvested, we're talking like edibles, topicals, flower, everything.
Right. Yeah.
Had to go back to testing labs. So huge companies like Carova, for one, that's in Colorado, Washington, Oregon, in California, they have nothing available. All those companies had to send everything back to these 11 labs for retesting, and now you have people that have cultivated, who are months in line to have their products tested, they can't get it out. They can't meet supply and demand right now. So it's across the board. It's testing, it's packaging, it's, it's literally everything. So...
Topsy turvy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Is our ceremonial here? Shall I re-announce a presentation from the Community Support Collaboration? Siskiyou Connect 211.
Thank you, Mayor Palphini, and council members. We appreciate you giving us a brief delay so that we could have these PowerPoint printouts available to you during our presentation. So, by the way, I'm used to feeling safe in the courthouse. This is the safest place in Siskiyou County. This is great.
It is.
It is a good place.
Yeah, you're right.
Right? This is great.
It is.
So, you know, for me personally, I know that, I know most or all of you as the district attorney in Siskiyou County, but another, another hat that I wear is president of the Community Services Council. And this is Lisa McCauley, who is our executive director of the Community Services Council, and that's the, the role in which I'm addressing you today, or we are addressing you today. We wanted to make a presentation to you, and basically, what we wanted to be on your agenda for is twofold. Number one is to make you aware of this program that we're undertaking, the Siskiyou 211, and number, number two, to ask you to partner with us. We're going to make that request of all of the cities, and the county, and other organizations in Siskiyou County, so that this program can be sustainable. So we'll go through what it is very briefly. Any questions, interrupt us at any time. Okay?
I do apologize for CSC, and I should know that that's Community Service Council.
Oh, you know.
But I just read what was on my paper.
It's like people calling me Kurt. I know you, right? I mean, it's, if, if one letter's different, that's okay.
Okay.
So, you know, ever since, you know, 13 years ago, I arrived in Siskiyou County personally to work here, and from my exposure to the Board of Supervisors meetings and City Council meetings, I've heard a lot of government officials say, wouldn't it be great if we had one place where we could send our citizens to make them aware of services available to them? One stop shop, one place they can go, where the information is always up to date, accurate, and easy to access. In looking for an opportunity to do that, the Community Services Council's come across this 211 opportunity. And, you know, in my experience, it is an unmatched opportunity. It is a remarkable opportunity. And it's, it's fun for me as an elected official to talk to other elected officials and say, this is the kind of thing that makes everybody happy, productive, and can really make you look good in working for your constituents. So let's go over what it is very quickly. The Community Services Council, of course, just very briefly, we were organized by the Board of Supervisors to deliver services to Siskiyou County citizens. We were instrumental in starting the community resource centers, the family resource centers, and have since moved our focus to other areas, and as they are more independent now. So that's really what we do. We are not an organization that has any revenue. You know, we have to generate that revenue through grants or through other, other means of finding resources to put together. Right now, the Community Services Council has a grant from the Blue Shield Organization that allows us to do different things to enhance healthcare, and they have allowed us to use the last year grant funding for that grant to start the Siskiyou 211 program. So startup costs are essentially taken care of, which is a wonderful thing. And so we're looking to try to be able to sustain this year to year. So what is it? As you can see here, as we start, at the very beginning, our vendor is the United Way of Northern California. That means the United Way is going to partner with us to provide a lot of the logistics, including the staff. If you think about having somebody at a computer terminal, or a phone, that you could access 24/7, how much would that cost? You know, you have to pay full-time employees, several of them, many of them, to have somebody sitting at a phone, ready to give service information to people. So as a cost multiplier, the United Way of Northern California, as our vendor, does that for lots of counties, and so they have staff who are staffing the phones and the computers all the time. Please.
Where? Oh. Where?
Where are they located? I know they have call centers in a few different places.
There are. The call center that we'd be working with is in Ventura County, but all of the information that they have is generated locally. We provide them with that information. So... Okay. Everything is real-time. It's continually updated and kept current.
As I just again yesterday toured the Klamathon Fire area, and thought back, and had a lot of references from CAL FIRE employees to Bowles, you know, you think about an emergency. And so it, not only does 211 allow you to let citizens know about services, but it is also a clearinghouse for information. For example, when the Orville Dam broke, as a 211 county, they were able to direct everybody to the 211 system, to take pressure off of dispatch, to take pressure off of the, the phones at, at City Hall and the different places that people are wanting to go. They were all directed to 211, and they actually brought in resources from all over the place to make sure there were enough people to handle all those calls. I know they said something about Las Vegas and the shooting, right?
They did. During the shooting, they had utilized the system, and because it was so, even the 211 system that they have was overloaded. And so in partnership with the other call centers, they were able to shift some of those calls to other places. Again, it's all computer-based, so any other call center had the same information throughout the system. And they were able to use that system for real-time updates on patients, who was, who had checked in and who hadn't. They were able to dispel rumors quickly, because real-time information was going out, and it was one place, again, where everybody could go and get the correct information that was actual and factual.
So as you can see, this is the kind of thing that we could never do on our own. I mean, if we have emergencies, or even every day having somebody at the phone, it's just something that would not be sustainable for us, if not for the economy of scale, and you'll, you'll see at the end of this, what that's going to cost our county. On the second page, the kinds of services available. Really, everything that, that government provides, and some things that they don't, from food and clothing to legal services, disaster, mental health, alcohol, affordable childcare, transportation, housing, all those things are available on this system. So on the next page, and Lisa, why don't you just very quickly talk about what it is that clients experience when they make calls to 211, and maybe tell them the different ways that 211 can be accessed.
Right. So 211, the way it's set up currently, in past, has been mostly phone and web-based. Now they're getting the system set up so that people can access the information through phone calls to the live call center, 24/7, 365. They get a live operator who is trained to answer their questions, to guide them through finding out what they need, and they're also trained to dig a little deeper. So if someone's calling with housing questions, how do I, you know, where can I find affordable housing? Is there a way that you can help me with that? They're also trained to be able to ask questions. Do you have, you know, how was, how is your food security? You know, do you have kids? How is childcare? Do you need help looking for a job? So they're able to give more than one referral. They're able to, to spread that out. And with the texting, they're also, they, same thing. They text in to the call center, and they have a dialogue with a live operator. The web-based system is, anybody can go on to, it'll, there'll be Siskiyou Connect 211 off of the 211 NorCal, and they'll be updating and continually keeping our website current through the United Way. And so when someone calls, they, the average call's about seven minutes. It can be as short as two minutes. It can be as long as 30 minutes. There is no limit, so they're not going to be rushing them off, you know, I've gotta get the next call. They're very well-trained and very informed.
And if any of you, I don't know, I see at least, at least maybe one computer up there, if, you know, if while you're listening to us, you wanted to tap, type in Tahama 211, you could see their website, see what ours would look like. So moving through this, we're not gonna spend a whole lot of time on each of these slides. You've, you've had touched on the client experience and some other incidents going on pages five and six. So our role as the Community Services Council is, number one, to bring this together, to bring it to Siskiyou County, to bring it to our communities. We're gonna do marketing and outreach so that people are aware of how to access it, and also make sure that we can do enough fundraising to make it sustainable, which really is not a very large amount. We're not, we're not coming in here and asking for a third of your budget. It's, it is a very, very manageable proposition. So Lisa touched on the ways it's accessed, including texting and the phone number. We're going to get our own 211 phone number for this, for this county. It's currently with the PUC?
CPUC is working right now to, United Way is working with CPUC to approve our 211 system. Every county that has 211 has gone through the CPUC process. There's 20 unserved counties in California. Most of them are northern rural counties, and so there's a strong desire to get all of the counties up and going. So the process has been streamlined, and we should be able to get through that really quickly, especially working with United Way, because they are already an established provider, because they're working, they manage Shasta and Tahama County as well.
Maybe let's talk about what the timeline is.
Timeline we're looking at is, right now, we're building the database. We will finish up the completed application to CPUC by, I believe we're shooting for September, and our goal is to have Siskiyou Connect 211 up and running fully by November. So it's, it's looking very doable, and we're encouraged by how quickly it's moving.
And we've been very impressed with United Way of Northern California. They've, they've been wonderful partners, very experienced, know exactly what to do. They're very helpful to us. And the great thing about this is we have their infrastructure, but here locally, we have our ability as, as the Community Services Council to make sure that we get information from government agencies, for example, in, in virtually real time, so that we always have updated information. So we're not relying on somebody from outside the county to update the information. We have it ourselves. Please. Question? Sorry.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor.
So I'm getting, getting this as informational only, as far, not from your presentation, but the organization is informational. So if people call in, you are resourcing the amount of information?
That's correct. So, please.
I know there's, there's one more. Sorry.
No.
Update of the database. Who's gonna be doing the update of the database? Like, to me, that would be...
Thank you. Hello.
Hello.
Sorry. New contraptions. So update of the database, who, who goes out and gets that? Because to me, we fall a little short in Siskiyou County on communication together. I mean, we have such a spread-out county with bits and pieces everywhere. So I'm looking at the example at Hornbrook right now, which is affecting maybe not the direct downtown area of Hornbrook, but that scattered area going towards Copco and stuff. So as those people come to you, who fulfills, who fills in the database where the rentals are? I mean, to me, there's, there's rentals, but then again, there may not be. You do have a shortage, so...
Correct me if I'm wrong. My, what, what 211 does is it directs people to resources that are free. For example, organizations that can direct people to housing. So it's not a place where somebody who has a room to rent can advertise.
Okay.
So they'll be given a, a resource to find that room for rent, but that's not what 211 is going to be for.
Okay, so you would re, fill, you would get them in touch with a property manager or something of that nature?
More like an, an organization that can assist at a time like that.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'm thinking, because, you know, Mrs. Tavallaro kept us real, kept me really updated on the remarkable things that happened in the aftermath of the Bowles fire.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be a, a really good example of things that would be put into the 211 system, so people could have, call one place and know where to go, to warehouse stored goods, to warehouse clothing, to warehouse food, and where they could look at finding housing in the short term. So those things can all be put into the 211 system, so people have one place to call to get those things done.
Okay. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Sure. Anything to add to that?
Will it look just like the Tahama one? It'll be very similar. I mean, are they, I would think that they would all be the same. They're, yeah. They're gonna be very much the same, but the information will be local for Siskiyou. Right. And then if that resource is not available in Siskiyou, then it will go out into a wider region. So they will have a way to connect people without someone having to sit on the phone all day and try to track down numbers and surf all over the web. They can just go to that website, and the information is there, or they can call, and the person on the other line will direct them to the appropriate agency, or, you know, in, in some cases, we would say, for childcare, for instance, if someone was calling with a question about childcare in Siskiyou, because it's a very big issue right now, they would be referred to the Siskiyou Childcare Council, who does have that list of approved providers who can qualify for the assistance and so forth. So it would put them directly in touch with that. At the same time, they would ask, do you have a need for, you know, again, like I was saying, food, things like that? So they're not getting just what they ask for. They can also be directed to other services that can help.
I do have a question.
Please.
In regarding to mental health in the county, I was looking at the Northern California United Way, what their mission and program is, and it explains about the mental health challenge, and we have that challenge here in Siskiyou County. How is this assisting or directing or supporting that effort?
That's a great question. We have, you know, every few years, California tries to revamp their, their effort to address mental health issues. For example, you know, this year, we got a new mental health diversion that the DA's office has to now implement. And so what we're happy about is there are so many calls from mental health services that I think you have to distinguish between two things, first of all. We're contracting with United Way of Northern California, but we are not bound by what their agency prioritizes. We're, we're essentially using them as staff. And so what we can do is use them as staff to bring local mental health resources to bear, but as Lisa just said, we can go beyond the borders of our county. So when somebody calls, if, if these trained call, call receivers can even, I guess, perceive that somebody has a mental health issue or a mental health need, they can draw on resources that go even beyond our county borders and allow these people access to that information. So it's really a way to treat problems regionally. They're gonna have access to every piece of information that we have in Siskiyou County, but if there's something that can help them outside of our borders, they'll get access to that as well.
I, I, I hope to see that. And my other question is, United Way, they did a, a change with the Bowles fire. They said of something they would do as far as financial, and they changed that effort. My concern... My concern still stands with that organization because of what they did. Is that, is that something that you're aware of, or is it a challenge, or we're, we're okay with that?
You know, I don't know specifically what it is that you're addressing. Do you, Lisa?
No, no.
I'd, I'd love to get that information from you.
It just, it was public. They promised a certain amount, it didn't happen, and there was no follow-up to why.
Okay, gotcha. And that is something, I think I heard something about. You know, again, the good thing about our relationship with United Way of Northern California here is, is we're not relying on them for services. We're relying on them for staff. So we give them the information and then they give it to the constituency. So we're really not relying on them to do anything, but staff our program. So we're not relying on their program, per se. They will be one of the pieces of information that we can offer, but we are not relying on them for the totality of the information that we offer. Thank you for those questions. Those are very helpful. We're on the last page, just to talk about cost. And for what I have described, you know, these numbers are just not very big, and this is countywide. This is not what we're asking from Weed. This is, this is countywide. And as I told you, a lot of these established costs at the, at the outset here are paid for by our grant. So life is good. We're just looking to be able to sustain this program year to year. The last thing we want to do is to get this going and to not have a, you know, a consistent revenue stream where it falls out and, and we lose this resource within, within three years. We want to make this resource available forever and be able to build our database and, and make this a tremendous service for Siskiyou County citizens. So really, we're talking about the annual cost of operating the full 211 service. This is what we're going to pay to our vendor, 12 to $16,000 a year. And we would need some additional funding just to have the Community Services Council be able to update the database, to make sure the information is always there. We have staff, you're looking at her, and, you know, we bring in other employees as necessary, and we want to make sure that we, well, we will make sure that we will always have that up to date. So we have been to Mount Shasta, we have been to Montague, and we've been to the Board of Supervisors. And we're happy to be in front of you today, asking for you to partner with us, so that we can make this a sustainable program. The Board of Supervisors is unanimously remarkably enthusiastic about this, particularly, I would say, the South County Supervisors. Ed Valenzuela has seen the 211 system in San Diego and just about lost his mind when we brought it in here. He thought it was the best thing he'd ever seen. And I know Michael Cobbstaff was very enthusiastic as well. Five-oh, they, they love it, they support it. We're going to have every, every support that we can, except we've got to go out and dig the fundraising. So we're hoping, we're, we're asking, based roughly on population, our, our ask with, with your town and, and also with Mount Shasta is going to be in the $2,000 to $2,500 range. It'll be roughly twice that in Wairika and less for the smaller cities.
I'm good. Any questions?
Someplace, I don't remember if it was just on, there's little cards, there's like little business cards?
Mm-hmm.
Did I see it on here or online?
There is a slide of it in here, yes.
Okay. Who would have those? Oh, yeah, there it is. Who would have those?
We would have those and we would be in charge of distributing those throughout the county. One of the ways that we're going to be promoting the whole system, starting soon, is that we'll be at the fair. We'll have a booth at the fair, advertisement, promotional materials will be going out there to everybody that walks by, and then from there on, it'll be flyers, it'll be cards. We'd like to get them into the hands of all of the law enforcement, fire personnel throughout the counties, so that they can give them out.
Schools.
As they, schools, every place that we can think of.
Did you already say fridge magnets?
Uh, no, they are on order.
Because that's...
They're on order.
That's the best one of all.
Yeah, yeah, so there'll be, you know, all kinds of different ways. We'll be doing print advertising, we'll be, do advertising on our Facebook page. We would love to have the support from each of the municipalities on their Facebook pages, their websites, that they are supporting and backing the whole 211 system and concept. So that's, that's where we're starting, and any ideas you have, we're more than happy to hear.
Lisa's the contact for that. 24/7.
Okay.
Sort of.
You call 211?
Yeah, not yet.
Almost.
Any more questions? Does community council members want to put this forward on the agenda for next month?
Yes.
So let's put it on the agenda for next month? And we will discuss and fund or?
Just make sure you tell that call center that when somebody in Happy Camp, just because it's 65 miles away, it's still two hours.
Yes, they, they will be aware of, of those types of things.
We get to do, get to do some geographical education.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to be very aware of the limits that we have within our county. And that's one of the good things about the system, is that everybody from the county can start locally and, you know, move out. The Happy Camp area does have their clinic and so forth. If there's other resources they need, when someone calls, they give their zip code. And so they can pu, put that in at the call center and it pops up with everything, and it just goes out concentrically from there to where the closest service is for what they're requesting.
Thanks.
We really appreciate the chance to come and talk to you today. Thank you for taking the time.
Thanks.
I guess we move on to number five, council member announcements, meeting reports and comments. As usual, we will start it off...
As usual, we will start it off with Stacy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report, but just the, the success of attending the Lola meeting I had yesterday and with all, some of the council members. It was very interesting to hear what's going on, which we kind of hear in other cities, but kind of some of the, can you hear me now? I speak loud. It was just interesting to see what was going on in the other cities and the operations, the thoughts, the ideas, the suggestions. And I was really encouraged. I hope some of those things can come to fruition, but, you know, that's always, like, when I, a grant comes, I want the grant first before we decide on it. Everybody knows that's my thoughts, but, but that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Kim?
Well, we all survived Carnival. The junior bocce kids participated in the Fourth of July Parade in Mount Shasta, which was very nice. God, I couldn't believe how many people. We had 52 kids between the ages of six and 17 participate in junior bocce all day on the fifth, and then 24 two-man team, two, in the men's category, and then 24 teams in the women's category compete for the adult bocce tournament. And it, from the reports that we've gotten so far from the Carnival Company, their numbers were up this year, so that's good news. And it looks like next year, we will be the weekend before the Fourth of July. So that, I want to say it'll be like June 28th, 29th.
Are we adjusting that according to schedules?
Yes, because Mount Shasta will be having their celebration Thursday through Sunday because the Fourth of July is on Thursday next year, so we'll, we'll go. And I, and I'm glad that we moved it because last weekend, the highest temperature, I think, was 94, 95 on Sunday, and it's supposed to be 103 this weekend here, so that was kind of a blessing in disguise.
And Sue?
I must turn my microphone on. I have been doing, with Great Northern, the free lunches for all children under the age of 18 over at Bel Air Park, Monday through Friday at 11:30 to about 12:30. And the days I can't make it, the chief's wife substitutes for me. And yesterday, the, is his name Drac? Drax. The police dog came, and we had about 50 kids between the ages of about zero to 15 that did, kept their mouths closed and their bottoms on the ground, and listened to them, listened to him talk and show that dog for 20 minutes. It was great. And we usually get about 40 to 50 kids every day at Bel Air. That includes the camp that the Resource Center's having. And it was, it was great. He needs to come into here so we can see him attack Officer Green, and the kids laughed. So that's all. And I went to Lola too, but you guys can talk about Lola.
Bob?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that we, we have a homeless coalition that's, will be meeting on July 19th again, but we are moving forward. There are going to be, we're, we're going to end up with a program. But as I said before, I really feel that it, rather than have another county entity, it's, we're going to, if it's going to actually be productive and effective, it's going to be community-based. So I'd just like everybody to be, be thinking about that, and when the time comes, I hope we can move together and, and actually have a program that's, that's effective. And on that note, I think that, how I feel about it is, once we have a, our own program, then we, then we, we've done our, our share. We don't have to accept people living on the outskirts of our town with fire danger, what, what it is, and to support our local, the effort to make sure that, that we are safe. But that's in, it's moving. As far as the Lola meeting last night, like Stacy was saying, is, is, it's encouraging. The county's moving. It's not just us. Some good things are happening in Weed, but the county's moving. And when you get an effort like that, or even getting those people together, the, you can kind of sense the, the nature of the spirit, you know, that it, that it's progressive, that it, we're moving ahead and we're thinking outside of the box, and we are finally, Siskiyou County's actually attempting to expand the pie, rather than dividing it up and, and competing with one another. We have to expand the pie, and that's going to happen through this economic growth that it's, that's going to happen in Weed. That's all I have.
You want to report on the transportation issue with the bus, senior bus?
Oh, okay. Yes, here again, we're having, I, I drive the bus on Friday, so I have a Lake Shastina contingency that we, that we use. But here again, for the seniors, on Mondays, we, we pick up and return people to the, first we go to the luncheon, the workout session before the luncheon, and give everybody a ride home. That's on Mondays. On Tuesdays and Wednesdays, that's appointment days and shopping days for Weed. Thursday and Friday are shopping and, and appointment days for Lake Shastina. And like I've said before, the, the Shastina people just really appreciate being able to have the service to come into town. And as far as the, the community goes, I hope the community can understand, can feel that, you know, that what, what we're doing is, is reaching out. We, we have a, a, a strong program that's initiated, we've initiated with this, but we're just now coming back to having a community center. Things are going to change, and the things are going to, to the, to the good. There's going to be programs there that we can get seniors to. There's going to be the, the interaction with that van, senior van, and the community center is going to be something really special for, for our, our, our community, as far as getting people to, to take them to workouts, to swim, swimming programs. So the senior van is a pretty, pretty neat thing, and, and want to encourage people to try it. The seniors, you have to, all have to be 60 and over, but really is a social event. It, it's, when you climb into a bus, you climb into the bus, it's not just about, oh, just to sit there, everybody kind of, you know, how's your week going? I haven't seen you yet, what's going on? And there, there's, there's a lot of, a, a lot of good things happening on, on that senior van or senior bus. Thanks for reminding me. Mayor?
Thanks. I was going to say something to Sue too. You went to, oh, report on the community building, speaking of community center.
On the community center?
Quickly, yeah.
It's getting there.
All right, I'm glad I asked for that report.
Um, no. September is not the date. January 1st is the firm date.
Quit whining. No whining up here. I hope we get through by October because we did schedule our next Lola dinner for the community center.
We're going to have a Lola dinner there if I have to bring tables and chairs from my house.
Okay. Well, we can all participate. I just bought a card table. I'll get my four in there.
Yeah, you bring your card table.
I have to take the puzzle. I'd like to report on my, my monthly meeting to the C2C, which is Call Your Information and Interpretive Center. We just finished the updating of our website, so that it's more mobile-friendly. We are adding content as we speak. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the Resource Center, in conjunction with what Bob was speaking about, we have just finished the merging of five Resource Centers from Wairika, Montague, Mount Shasta, Weed, and Dunsmere as, into one entity. We have created a new board, and the good thing about the new board is that some of the members that Bob is affiliated with, with homelessness and mental health are now on that board as well. So there's a little bit more of a, a closer knit, so, so we can work a little bit better together. We'll have to watch conflicts, I suppose, but it's, we're not making any money, so I guess maybe we don't have to. Also like to remind everybody, as Jimmy mentioned, on July 17th, there's going to be a workshop at City Hall at 5:30? Did I get that time right?
It's 5:30.
Okay. I, I bravely invited all of the...
Six o'clock?
Community, community, six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. I, I did invite the rest of the community leaders throughout the county. We'll see how many show up. I figure information is good for everybody. And that's all I have for tonight. So let's move on to the regular agenda. Item A, Siskiyou County Representation for League of, League of Cities Annual Conference. We need to have a voting delegate and a alternate voting delegate. The last time we left this, Stacy was thinking about it, or, I guess it would be for returning councilmen at this point. Are you planning on announcing tonight? Isn't that a... Sorry.
I'm just, I'm looking for the content of what's going on of the, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, and, and everyone, the content was being established and what they're talking about, very serious issues, and I want to be able to be the communicative person for that.
Okay.
That's why.
Okay. Anybody else want to, thinking about going?
What are you thinking about?
I'll, I'll go, or I guess up to three of us can go, is that correct?
If you're not all attending the same session, there's only two of you attending the session. I've seen the community send all five of their council members.
Are you attending?
Yeah, I've made the commitment to attend.
Okay, so we have one. Now, that's part of our whole contingent, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I could be named an alternate.
Okay, so...
Are you going?
I was thinking about going to Long Beach, yeah. Actually, I didn't appreciate the League of Cities meetings until I went to the last one. I guess I should have went to another one. There is a lot of information that be, that is passed out.
It's very valuable. As I mentioned, when I went two years ago, they talked about the cannabis industry and the organizations that would be created, which I communicated to us. So we had like a heads-up, I believe, to know what was coming down the line. And we can do more partnering with the League of Cities, but it's just such a disconnect, being called the Sacramento Valley Chapter, which we talk about, and we're aware of Northern California. It's a disconnect sometimes.
Well, we do have two local representatives, actually, that go to that. And one is Joan Freeman from Wairika and Dave Kessler from Dunsmere. And they are actually, I think, voting members on the board, so I think they have stepped up, so.
I believe Joan, Joan is actually the vice chair.
Yeah. So let's schedule this for myself, Stacy, and Ron. Is there any other...
No, but I have a question. So I can't go soon. But the 13th, we have a council meeting.
It happened last year too.
So we can't have three of us gone, or we won't be able to have our meeting.
You're correct. Bye, Gus.
We could reschedule the September meeting. We could reschedule the September meeting.
Or we can reschedule.
I just want, if three council members wanna go, then we need, we can establish that, that's fine. Does anybody else wanna go?
I think the issue is, you know, what does it cost us to go?
It is costly.
You know, we're talking about round trips, you know. You know, it'd be nice of all five of us to go, but can we really afford that? I mean, we're talking travel and lodging. So, I think, I think we, I would like to see at least a limit of three, no more than three.
Maybe two. Two's fine.
Two's.
I mean, I would encourage, if anybody hasn't gone, I would encourage you to go. That would be my first order of business. If somebody has the ability to go, that hasn't gone before, I would actually say that that would be my first option. And if somebody that, so you or Kim haven't been, so if you would.
How much is the new, new, new?
The League of Cities is a little bit different. It's a bunch of classes.
Is it always in Long Beach? Do they change it?
No, they have one in the north and then one in the south. So, next year, it's gonna be in Monterey.
I won't go that one.
It's extremely valuable what
I'm going next year.
what they partner with, with the state government.
I'll plan.
So, a lot of workshops and sessions and just the interaction that you talk with folks. You learn a lot, and you connect with folks. "Oh, I remember you. Aren't you from Weed?" Yes. "And do you have this program going along?" It's a great connection. So, and that's why I mentioned you two. I would definitely give my spot.
I'm gonna go next year.
Come Monterey?
Yeah.
I can't go this year, so.
Bob makes a good point. Expenses for the city is kind of important too. Let's go two. One, two.
If you need to go, I'd say three.
I don't need to go. I mean, I just, yeah, I was just gonna take a vacation in Long Beach, that's all. I gotta be honest, right? Sorry. I just nod. Anyway, skip that one. So, let's go with Stacy as the, you wanna be the voting delegate or the alternate?
Either's fine. I've done both.
Well, I imagine the councilman should be the voting, and then Ron be the alternate.
Happen on Friday evening after, at the lunchtime, at 1:00.
Yep, settled.
So, we don't need to reschedule our September meeting?
Do we need to make a motion on any of that, or?
Yes, please make a motion.
Okay, then I move that we send Stacy as the voting delegate and Ron as the alternate delegate to the League of Cities.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to item B, Human Resources. Council will consider contract for code enforcement officer, this is a long one, so should we take it in pieces? Council will consider contract for code enforcement officer an extension of interim city clerk's contract. So, we have a code enforcement officer scheduled to start work, and the city clerk is Debbie's contract to help us as needed. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me take it a little bit out of order. We have different people make, doing presentations on different items here.
Okay.
So, it's good for you to take them separately. The one thing that I wanted to do was to let you know that we lost our building inspector, who was offered position with the county and agreed to accept it. We had 26 pending permits, the most important one of which was the community center. So, we could not go without a building inspector. But we really don't have a lot of work right now. So, I took the opportunity to try to cut our costs a little bit. And although we're searching for a full-time building inspector, we think that there are things in the planning process that we're gonna see this summer and this fall, that if they get approved by the city, next summer's construction season could be fairly brisk. And what we will try to do is what we did with Paul, and that is to find someone with a construction trades background that is committed to our community and would be willing to take on the role of building inspector with training. The only reason I mentioned that, and the only reason we put it on the agenda, is I wanted the public to be aware that we have hired a gentleman. His name is Aaron Goodman. He has previously served as the chief building inspector for Imperial Beach and two other towns, three other towns in Southern California. Aaron has one leg into his retirement. He has worked in three states, not only California, but also Washington and Montana, and is semi-retired and only really wants to do 20 hours a week, which fits in really well with the level of work that we have. We hired him through a temporary agency, so we are not providing benefits. We do end up covering salary, and the temporary agency does some benefits. So, the salary includes those items. Two cities that we're providing some service to, Tulley Lake and Doris, have both agreed to continue the service through us. But Aaron will be getting his retirement from the state of Washington, April 1st. So, what he's trying to do is supplement his retirement income until he gets April 1st, and that's why we can get someone of his quality and his experience. But we're gonna try to get someone full-time, so that we can begin training after the 1st of the year, while we still have Aaron's availability to help in that training process. So, by cutting down and not having a full-time building inspector, not paying CalPERS, not paying Social Security and other things for a full-time position, one of the things that's been a frustration to our council and to me is we haven't had that much code enforcement going on. For a time period, that was understandable, because after the fire in 2014, we got kind of busy with construction. But I've learned a bit that the type of personality that works really well as a building inspector is not necessarily the type of personality that does a great job as a code enforcement officer. The building inspector is trying very hard to be citizen-friendly, trying to help the construction community do it right, do it right the first time, avoid costly errors that have to be borne by the public, because it has to be done a second time. And I really appreciate that. But then they have a tough time putting on the hat and becoming the cop and telling people, "There are rules, and you've actually gotta live by them." Police officers tend to have a personality that they will, in fact, enforce the laws. And one of our retired officers, Bill Lackmeyer, who lives in Lake Chastina, has been hired by Lake Chastina and has been doing an excellent job, doing about 20 hours a week for them in code enforcement. And I asked him if he would be willing to do that for us, and he said yes. And the first thing that I sicked him on was Main Street and the empty buildings downtown. And I actually put him to work as of July 3rd, so he is, is it's not coming over fast, hard enough? Okay, I apologize. I actually put him to work on July 3rd, and I've been impressed with the amount of time and effort that he's put in. The contract for him is in front of you. It would be for one year. It would not exceed 960 hours, so we would not interfere with his retirement from the city of Weed. And the hourly rate, without benefits, he would receive no benefits under the contract, would be $25 an hour, which is reasonable, I believe. And so, we're recommending that you approve that particular contract. I will delay the introduction on the city clerk's contract until you've had an opportunity to ask questions and take action on the code enforcement officer's contract.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. The vacant property was exactly what I wanted to hear. Is there gonna be a report coming soon on that? Because we heard a kind of a, one-year, two-year kind of a hit, not hit and miss, but a bring-up-to-date status and then nothing else. And that really concerns me, when I hear of how some business owners are thinking or communicating what's happening. And that's not in our best favor, because they aren't following what it is. Is that, is that coming up?
You adopted a vacant building ordinance in 2014, just before the fire. And we just began the process of trying to enforce that, when the fire came and our attention was diverted. So, we have not really done anything since 2016, and none of the property owners have complied with the ordinance since 2016. So, the time has come for a reset, to start all over again, the way the ordinance is written and what it was intended to do. And that's the direction that I gave to Lackmeyer. And I am certain that there are property owners that would like not to comply with the vacant property ordinance. They haven't wanted to comply since 2014, and many of them have avoided compliance. But part of our job description is to enforce the rules as the council has directed us to do so.
Mr. Mayor? Ron, you mentioned that the code enforcement officer is going to, can exceed 960 hours. Now, he's putting 20 hours a week in and out at Chastina, and he's gonna put 20 hours in to Weed?
A maximum of 20 hours, but yes. I would imagine in July and August, he's going to max out with his 20 hours. I would also expect that after he is able to clean up a handful of things that have been not attended to, that the number of hours is going to start being reduced later on. Because 20 hours times, you know, 52 weeks would exceed the 960.
Okay.
I wholeheartedly support this, you know I do. I've been looking for teeth for a while. I would like to entertain a motion to approve this contract. Do we do these separately, or can we do them at the same time after you go up to Debbie?
Separately. I would do them separately, so that we have a record of the action.
Okay.
I'd second your motion.
Do you wanna?
You have to move it first.
I thought you did.
He said he wanted to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the contract for our code enforcement officer.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
When Debbie retired on December 31st, and we hired Sandy, Sandy's in the process of training, and she's doing an excellent job. You've seen the first of her evaluations. She's teased me that I am already a week late in getting her second evaluation out, and I admit to that. I will get that out shortly. But it is going to be as favorable, if not more favorable, than the one she received at three months. But we knew that because she was in the process of training, that she would need to ask for and receive some assistance from Debbie. We asked specifically for permission from CalPERS to be able to hire Debbie for a handful of hours in the first six months, and we signed a six-month contract. That contract terminated June 30th. Because we're still in the training mode, we would like to extend that, but we have rewritten the contract a bit, because there are limitations that are applicable in the first six months of retirement that are not applicable thereafter. The contract in front of you is for 960 hours, and it's identical to, otherwise, it's identical to what you approved back in, I believe, January, with one exception. The CalPERS rule said that if you hired someone who had retired during the first six months, that you could not pay them greater than the hourly rate that they made on the date that they left. And so, that was $37.25. We thought that it should be a more appropriate rate, and so the one in front of you is actually $40 an hour. I've talked to Debbie about it. She has told me that she does not expect it to be more than 20 hours a month. And so, the cost for the next year is actually gonna be less than what it was for the first six months. Most of the things that she had on her desk, she has actually cleaned up. And in fact, Sandy will be shortly moving into the office. I can report, maybe I ought not tease Debbie about it, but I can report that the bird clock is now gone, thank heavens. The public doesn't realize that I moved my office to get away from the bird clock.
Any questions here?
Do you want me to make a motion? I will make a motion to approve the contract for interim city clerk.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
What else do we have?
The next item is the MOU for School Resource Officer, and Martin, and we'll present that.
At our last meeting, we had a presentation put together by the local schools and our department, talking about school safety. And in, kind of in the conclusion of that, we talked about the need for potentially entering into an agreement with the elementary school as they were willing to contribute to put in an officer in the classroom, in the school, on the campus, and to assist them with variety of things like truancy and, more importantly to us, a communication line with the students and the parents as they arrive and things. And so, we've worked on that. This is consistent with what we did back in the early 2000s, when we had a school resource officer by way of a grant. We've applied for that grant repeatedly since the last one expired. And unfortunately, we've been unsuccessful with that. Competition for that position and that grant money has been very high nationwide. And we have applied again this year. But in an effort to try and work with the school, put an officer onto that campus during the school year, we have suggested that funds that we approached you last year with for cops money that came in, we had an amendment of a spending plan, as you recall. We added an additional vehicle to that spending plan, which we never purchased. And in turn, what we would like to do is utilize that money as an encumbrance into this fiscal year and basically pay for the match money for that position with the school, allowing us to evaluate whether or not the position is good, the position works, with the idea that we really don't know where funding is for the next year, either from us or from the school, but at least get an opportunity to evaluate the need for the school resource program. So, Justin is here today just to talk about school resource, maybe some of the opportunities we might have for communication and those kind of things. And here he is.
So, the LCAP was written this year to include the elementary schools portion, which would be a lot for four hours a day. With ours, we'd like to expand beyond. With ours, we'd like to expand beyond that with the additional funding coming in to make that a full-time position. It's very difficult to move one officer into a four-hour-a-day position, but we feel that there's a need for that because we have a real disconnect lately with the youth in the community. Over the years, you know, many of us have coached or done certain programs like that. We currently don't have anybody doing that. Nobody currently has any time for that in their own personal lives and with their own families and whatnot. So, we're looking to reestablish that connection with the youth that we've lost over the past couple of years. We feel that with the four hours a day allotted to the elementary school, we could also expand into the high school as we see a need there, both with truancy and just not so much enforcement action, but just education, both for evaluation of school safety plans and also with the children and the teachers. And we also work with the College of the Siskus as their law enforcement. They're one of the only community colleges in the state that still don't have their own law enforcement department, so they contract with us. They're currently establishing a new office for us up there. Kind of we'll use it as a substation per se, that we'll have computer access, and we'll be able to deal with problems on campus that they're experiencing. Currently, our our method of follow-up with them is delayed if something happens on a Friday or even at night. We can't contact staff until the next day. Having having the ability to be in the school is going to be a great benefit to us. We'd also like to carry that School Resource Officer position over and spend some time up there as well, working with staff and students.
Fiscally, we spent $50,000.
Fiscally, we just spent $50,000 on the on the last two motions, okay? And there's more to be spent in this current agenda that's before us. Is there any way that we could connect with the schools to help supplement? In other words, if we're going to have a good partnership, partnership is fiscally a responsibility too. Is there anybody working on the end from the schools on that point?
The elementary school was already committed to nearly $30,000 as a as a match to us. And that is the four hours we spoke of on a 160-day school, 180-day school, school year. So, that's about half of it, the remaining being the $32,000 that I've talked about, the encumbrance from last year's revenue from the COPS program would cover the fee, the total cost of that of that officer.
And that's just for the four hours at the elementary? Are we talking four hours elementary, high school, and then college?
The contribution from the elementary school would be four hours at the elementary school. The contribution from the city of Weed would be allowing us to to work with the high school, the college, and do other activities within our our community.
Okay. Have we approached the college on any subsistence of any kind?
We have. They're financially strapped at this point as well. High school is is in the same position right now. For us to be able to to use this as a test year for us and be able to go back to the high school and to the college, I think could be beneficial to show statistically what we've done, what we've accomplished, and work from there.
Okay. I do have a question. The college wants a presence at their on their site for police support or something of that nature, right?
Sure.
And yet, they can't find a financial piece to support that. I have I have a challenge with that.
They they do contribute, and they have for many years. So, we've had a memorandum of understanding with them for for years, probably dating back to the 70s, where they contribute to have an officer patrol that area.
I'm speaking of a financial piece, and I know that's.
That's what I'm saying.
So, they do pay?
Yes, they do.
COW does, oh, okay.
Currently.
And I would I would hope our focus is, as we look at youth development, the early years are very crucial, but you can still hit some behaviors in the high school year or two. So, I hope there's some money that can come from that because it's a real disconnect.
And that's what we're talking about, the additional monies from the city would go towards focusing those additional four hours on the high school, the college, and our community.
I would just like those other organizations to put a penny in.
Yeah.
Whatever that looks like, and I hope that can happen.
The college, just to clarify, the college does contribute, but they don't contribute enough for us to have an officer up there at all times. We're scheduled to be there so many times on campus a day. We do both drive-throughs and foot patrols. With the new establishment of the office, we would hope to be able to utilize this Resource Officer just for, again, as Chief said, it'd be based on what our plan is right now, it's just a trial year, but we'd be able to come up with some hard statistics and see how much time we're spending up there and how much how effective it is.
And I think actually, there is a lot of contact at the college level, I would think, with our community. So, even if it cuts that contact, it does save the city some money on going out to calls possibly, if it if it works well.
How much does the college give us?
It's in the neighborhood of probably $8,000, $9,000 a year.
Okay.
That also includes coverage for special events that they're required to have an officer. They do pay for the officer to be there.
Above and beyond.
Oh, they pay, so like when you go to the football games, they pay?
They pay that additionally, yes.
Okay.
That's an additional charge. Or a dance if we go there or something.
Mr. Mayor, a question. Justin, the disposition that we're creating, is it is it going to be funded well enough that we are going to be able to maintain that same person? Or is this going to, is this, will this position be something that people are going to step into and step up to another?
No, this this is a specialized position. A School Resource Officer has to be the right person, and they have to be properly trained. There's actually post-re requirements. We have identified somebody that could fill that spot for us within our department. He's he was already working well with the youth in the community, and he could easily step in with the proper training to fill the entire role, which includes everything from education to informal counseling to enforcement actions.
Is there a training program that's involved with setting up a position like this?
There's ongoing training, plus the initial School Resource Officer training as well.
I, when you speak of training, I've talked to the chief about it before, that the standard training for the police officers, a lot of the police officers that we're getting, the new people, and on that note too, that we've had a lot of people, employees that come to town and they move on because they wanted their swimming home, their better pay, things like that. But, the in the training itself, I've watched a documentary where a fellow, a teacher saying, explaining to the police, to the trainees that, hey, there's a war out there, and we are the Green Berets or Special Forces. And that's not what goes on in Weed. We're not at war. But, the training, the training that people are getting is for Oakland or, you know, and this type of, I'm really in favor of this type of training coming back into our community. And I want to say that especially the, not just because they're here, we have some long-term police officers, I think, I feel they're long-term here in this room, which is is a sign of continuity that I think our community needs to go to. We don't need, I don't personally don't think we need to be a training community for these police officers. And obviously, we're we're getting some people to stay a little longer, and that's great.
As Justin said, it's it's important that we identify the right person for this job. And bringing a person in for this job is not our desire at all. We'll have to bring somebody in to be able to cover a patrol shift, but the person that's going to go to the school is a person that's going to fit our needs and the school's needs and the community's needs to work, just as you said. And and what we don't need is we don't need everybody coming in with the militaristic attitude. I agree with that.
One other thing I'd like to keep, make sure to remind the council, the COPS program is a federally funded program. And the tax cuts that are in place right now are going to affect us as we go down. This was six months ago, this program was stopped. And it's and it's about funding, federally funding. So, things are going to be coming to the state. These, it's going to be leaning on the state and the county and the communities. These federal funds are, I really think they're something of the, in the past. It's going to be a while before they, before they're, these funds are filled in.
They have recently reestablished the funding source federally for the School Resource Program, and we've applied for that.
Oh, they have?
Yes.
Okay, good. But I, down the road, it's going to get tight.
It's highly competitive, only one agency north of Sacramento obtained a grant last year.
Really? Okay. So, the the fund itself is probably cut as far as the, the program's still there, but the funds are.
Yeah, I think it's like 40 million nationwide.
Everybody wants it now.
So, how does our budget look like? I mean, the school's going to contribute 30, the colleges can contribute about eight or so roughly. And then that leaves us with 32, that's a $70,000 issue. Is that going to, that's not going to cover a complete officer when we look at everything. Is that correct, or is it going to be a little bit more than that?
No, it's going to cover a complete officer plus benefits, both salary and benefits.
So, we're looking at the $32,000 expenditure then?
Yeah, it's one-time-only money though, so I caution you that as we get into 2019 and we look at the next two-year budget, we're going to have, if we want to continue to provide funding and don't receive a grant or additional contributions from the schools, we may not have the money to continue the program.
That, I guess it does concern me a little bit because if you were adding an officer, I'm a little skeptical if we can't keep that officer, we're going to spend, invest in a lot of training. So, I do approve of the program.
The officer that he's proposing, I don't think the officer has been selected, but I do know that they've probably limited the number. And the officers that we're talking about is someone that is a long-term employee and is vested with the city. We do have a one-year probationary period for new officers, and they're not guaranteed continuation. We look at a couple of different items. Funding is one of those items, but the most important item is performance. So, you're not in a position where you're doing a reduction in force. If you approve this and then are unable to continue it for a second year, you may be in a position where someone who is a probationary employee may not be extended. The the thing that I will tell you is that it takes quite a little time for the police department to hire. The, you know, going through all of the testing, the psychological, the oral boards and all the rest of that, often takes six to nine months for them to even hire somebody in. So, as you're doing this program for the next 11 months, they may not even have gotten around to filling that vacant position by the time you're making the decision as to whether or not you can continue to fund it.
And then, Mr. Mayor, my question comes for that. We just approved a salary increase for all employees. How does this fit with those numbers?
Well, that was calculated by the the Chief of Police when he was looking at the total cost for the program. He knows what the the individuals are making that have, that he's considering. He's, he knows what the cost is for fringe benefits.
So, that was factored in?
Yes, it was. And it's not an entry-level position.
Right, so wouldn't be the training probation that we had in the agreement?
No.
No, what we're coughing up is the $32,000 for the car that we were going to buy.
Right.
It's just, to me, I mean, you create the position, I don't know how fair it is. We did at one time discuss a training, didn't we discuss a training position with getting somebody from the police program?
Yeah, we we have budgeted in both last year and this year's budget, the salary for a trainee, and our thought was that we were going to try to to hire a minority in order to try to have more diversity on our police department so that it was reflecting more our community. Heaven knows, the Chief of Police has spent literally hundreds of dollars in advertising trying to get someone who's coming out of the academy to come here. Very often, those individuals don't think about the difference in doing a job in Sacramento or Oakland compared to what the lifestyle would be if they were doing a job in Weed. They look at the dollars that are being offered, and very often, coming out of school, having debt, they go for the bucks. And so, we haven't been able to really hire someone. Those candidates are in demand in every department. So, what we wanted to do was to promote, you know, get someone who had ties to the community, pay them full-time, and send them to the academy. We had an office, an individual that we wanted to, we made an offer to. They had been in the Highway Patrol Academy. There had been an accident, their family was living in Weed. They had to leave the the academy in order to take care of their family after the accident, and enough time had passed that the Highway Patrol told them that they couldn't pick up where they left off, they had to start all over again. And we thought that that individual might be willing to take our position, but they made the election to start over again with the Highway Patrol. We continue to look for someone, and if you have suggestions, or anyone in the, you know, listening audience has suggestions about someone who might well be a good candidate for that program, Chief of Police would like to hear about that.
I have one more question. Is based on that staffing need, from the communications that we've had, we understand that there's a need for more officer presence. By selecting someone that's currently on staff, is that getting those services that we know that we need to have for the protection of our city? That's a big question, bud.
That's the reason why we would would try and fill that position as quick as we could. As you know, the school year, we still have about a month and a half before that occurs, so we can be in a position where we're we're working towards getting somebody else on. In the meantime, you know, we would have to be able to work schedule-wise to make sure that, you know, our priority still has to be to the community. The four hours to the elementary school would be necessary, but the other four hours we can use to help cover calls for service if that's needed.
Any more questions?
At this particular point too, just as a reminder or or information if you hadn't heard, we have in the past, going back 20 years, 30 years, we we have brought on people in a temporary full-time status where they come in for a limited time period. And I would suggest that we bring them in knowing at this particular point that you're going to be here for 10 months, and if things work out financially, then then you have a job, and if they don't, then then your position is is gone. And we've used that to cover people while a current employee goes to to an academy or to other training and stuff. So, we have other options as well, just so that a person that gets hired knows that there is a potential for not continued employment.
Well, at least if we're upfront, that would be, you know, I hate this, you know, you give a guy a position and he's, he moves here, he moves his family here, and all of a sudden, he's gone.
Well, that, I I think that happens in more than this job. I mean, lots of people get jobs that they say might only be a year.
Speaking of the grant, in 2010, we hired two officers, and they were both aware that their jobs were, when the money ran out, if the budget did not, you know, afford them to stay, then they would not be staying. It worked out with attrition through, you know, employment, but they were aware when they took the job, it was a two-year position. It worked out with attrition through, you know, employment, but they were aware when they took the job, it was a two-year position and it may not be, last longer than that.
And if the department's willing to sacrifice a mobile, that's a sacrifice.
And I thi- on a personal basis, watching these kids at the camp yesterday, the kids need it. In this town, the kids need it, they love it. And it's, you know, 'cause there's a lot of kids in our community that when they see a police officer, it's usually not gonna turn out good for them. So, it's nice to have the police officer there when things are gonna be good. He's here and things are gonna be okay because a lot of the kids do, do not feel that way and they need to feel that way.
I agree with that completely.
In the cities, in some cities, the program is successful because of the, of the school. They really like having a school resource officer. And we may be able to, it says we'll hear that the schools, all of them, may kick in some more money or some additional funding to keep that position because it is very, very good. And it did a lot, us a lot of good in the past.
It could save, it could save us in the long haul.
Like I have for years. You get a lot of feedback from the kids. You know, it, that could be.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I will.
So, the chair needs.
A motion.
Go for it, Sue.
So, I will make a motion that we approve the school resource officer.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anything left on this little long diatribe here, Ron? Oh, middle one, council will review evaluation documents and procedures for city manager.
Yeah, the mayor and I have been negotiating a contract extension. The document was submitted to the city attorney and approved as to form with two changes that I've made in the document. As we were getting together to set the agenda for this meeting, the mayor wanted me to put that contract on the agenda and I suggested to him that we had heard at least one, I think two consulars say that they'd like to do a, a formal evaluation. So, I've drafted the evaluation document, I've put it in your packet. I'm asking you if you will go through the process individually to do that and hold a, a closed session for the purpose of your telling me what I do right and what I do wrong. And I hope that the list of what I do wrong is not greater than the list of what I do right. When, uh, I, I was actually gonna suggest to him and then did suggest at the agenda meeting that we'd put that on the August agenda as a closed session as part of that meeting and then have it on the September, the contract on the September agenda. He thought that that was delaying the contract renewal too long. And he wanted that, he wanted the contract renewal on the August agenda. So, you're either going to need to do the evaluation at a special meeting or you're gonna have to do the evaluation on the same night you consider the contract. Whichever you decide is the way you'd like to proceed is perfectly acceptable with us. What you cannot do under the new rules since Pepper was adopted is you cannot approve a contract extension for a city manager at a special meeting. It has to be on a general, a, a regular meeting of the council. So, it'd have to be on either August or September.
So.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You won't be here September.
You won't be here at the September meeting. 'Cause you and Stacy are gonna go to Long Beach.
Yeah, the mayor want, the mayor wanted the contract on the August meeting.
Oh.
And so, I think we need to do a special meeting, we gotta wait how many days, just one week in between?
Use your microphone.
Do we need to use one week in between in order to, in other words, if we have a special meeting, evaluate on a closed session and then put the contract on for the ninth? Is that legitimate?
Nine, you don't have to have any time in between.
Okay.
You can do it in consecutive days.
Okay. So, how's the council feel? We don't wanna go too late into the, the year, that's why I didn't wanna wait till September.
Doesn't the contract expire at the end of the year?
Contract expires December one?
December thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
So, my, my, my input would be definitely have our input on the evaluation documents, 'cause I appreciate that portion, and then be able to review that with the city manager prior to our time to meet as a team.
So, give me a day.
You want, you wanna go over it with him before we talk about it? Or you want us to talk about it before we go over it with him?
Either way, as long as we look at the, 'cause, 'cause these are comprehensive, the, the suggestions in there and the information. So, it's, it's valuable for that level for us to look at it first before we come back together. We just have to commit to that.
Yeah, I agree, we need to have a meeting.
For the evaluation.
A closed session.
And then, right, a closed session.
Okay.
And then we can come back on the August ninth.
With the findings from closed session.
And we need to discuss those findings on the closed session on that same meeting. Under closed session, we would discuss that as well. And then come back out and discuss contract.
And the final review information.
You wanna do that all in the same night? Or you wanna say?
Well, we wanna do the evaluation first.
Traditionally, the consuls have not reported the evaluation because it's, it's confidential information to the, to the, on a personnel matter. So, generally, there's no, a report. We told him seventeen things he didn't do right. And he's gotta clean up these seventeen things and we're gonna give you all seventeen of them so that the co-
So, all we need to do is get the evaluation done.
Yes.
And then, Ron, you need to act on the evaluation at whatever point. And then, based upon that evaluation and our discussion of that evaluation, we will approve or disapprove a contract.
There you go.
So, what day would we like this on, council? We can set it up, today is the twelfth. Who's available on twenty-sixth?
I knew you were gonna say that.
Or the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth?
Night.
Are you on vacation, anybody?
On what day?
The week, let's say the week of the twenty-third to the twenty-seventh.
I can do those days, but the twenty-sixth is our last day with the camp kids and we have a party. Me and the cops.
You and the cops.
Yeah, and the firemen, doesn't that sound pitiful?
Is that what, is that what the resource center camp?
Twenty-three or twenty-five for me.
Twenty-three or twenty-five?
If.
Unless you do a day meeting.
I need to tell you that I have vacations scheduled, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. I, I'm going to the Mid-State California State Fair in Paso Robles and I'm going to Tim McGraw concert on the night of the twenty-fourth. My wife was nice enough to buy me tickets as my birthday present.
That's nice.
Sixty-five again, huh?
I'm going on another anniversary of my thirty-fifth, my thirty-first, fifth birthday.
Okay.
Whatever gets you through the day.
Then we could look at August second, how's that looking for everybody?
That looks marvelous.
Your Thursdays are bad for you.
No, that, that one works, I was looking at the first.
I'm good.
August second, looking for you.
Does it have to be at night?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't have to be, I mean, it's just.
Before.
It's a closed session, how's your workday on a Thursday?
I'm good.
On Thursday?
Right, that's my off day, so that's perfect.
How's your Thursday? Are you driving? How about you, Sue?
Thursday day, I have rotary.
After about, say, three o'clock, is that early enough for you?
I like three o'clock. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so closed session.
That way there, we won't actually be any extra for staff time either, so that worked out pretty well. So, let's go August second, three P.M.
Got it.
And then the last item under this item B that has taken a little time tonight is Martin, the consul asked that we establish evaluation procedures for every department. You know that I have them for department heads. In fact, I use essentially the same document that I provided you for my evaluation with only minor tweaks because I'm not, you're not talking about my cooperation with another department, you're talking about my cooperation with other governments. But Martin has implemented an evaluation program for Public Works and is working on one for the Finance Department and I wanted him to make you aware of what he's doing.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. As, as you requested several months ago, we needed to, to pursue this a little bit heavier and, and work with it within the departments. And I'm, I'm happy to say that as a group, it was fairly easy to get things accomplished and I, I appreciate what these guys have done to, to make that happen. And Public Works at this point has a program that's established, implemented and currently is being worked. And the evaluation process is, has been going well. It includes as a probationary employee, a, a monthly evaluation. And that's being done with some new guys. It includes an annual evaluation, which is based on the merit system of pay that, that the city has and, and has had for many years. And we have implemented a, a start of a program with Finance Department. And, and just to get things started with them, we opted to do a self-evaluation with the employees and we will use that as a tool to, to work towards implementation. So.
I am very pleased with that and I know the, the council is too. And, and I think as we go forward, I think everybody, every employee will actually learn to appreciate it in some fashion. It gives you your short, your shortcomings, it's okay, criticism is, is good. Constructive criticism is good.
Yeah, it is.
Opportunities for advancement.
And, and thank you, Craig, for the city guys having their outfits, even has a hat.
He'll be doing the majority of the evaluations and then bringing them to me to, to be finalized.
Okay.
It's gonna work out well.
You guys are doing good things, I'm, I'm ready for the next one. That's great.
I, I checked off my list now.
Are you, you're waiting for this next one?
We can, we can move on to item C now?
Yes.
Okay, Public Works Department, Finance Department, council will consider allocating funding to purchase a used bucket truck.
Craig might want to add to my presentation on this. Council has repeatedly told me that they want, that you want us to be a little safer as we're putting up both Christmas decorations and banners. We tried to get the bucket truck from Mount Shasta, but we have, we have failed more often than we have gotten it. Sometimes it's because they are in the process of using it and can't give it to us. Sometimes it's broken down and unavailable to us because of mechanical problems. So, I, when I got hit with the requests that, that happened this spring when we got the, put the last banners up, I told Craig, okay, I'm tired of getting told to do something different by the council, go out and find out what it would cost to get a used bucket truck. And the price of the used bucket truck is nearly sixty-five thousand dollars. And that's on the low end of the scale. He could've spent a great deal more. He did have to go with a thirty-foot beam instead of a twenty-foot because we have that Christmas tree up on the hill. And if we're going to repair it in order to, to do it, we're gonna have to go with thirty-foot. I will tell you that when we put the Christmas lights on the, the Chris, the, the tree over here, we had to have a ninety-foot bucket. So, in, instead of doing, instead of doing the Christmas lights on that tree, every year you will notice that the Christmas lights stay on the tree, okay? But we have commercial lights that are L.E.D., so that will get us by for a number of years. This is not in the budget, we did not plan on buying it. And if you approve the purchase, then we're going to have to not do something else. I do not have a suggestion on what that something else is, but I'm willing to come back to you in the future when I do have a suggestion and, and make a, a request. I didn't want you to be comparing whether or not we wanted this versus that. I, I wanna know how, how badly you want us to get off of the bed of a pickup truck and use a, a bucket truck. If you're, if, if, if you're gonna continue to beat up on us because you want a safer method, go ahead and buy this vehicle. But if you don't go ahead and buy this vehicle, may I please hear the end of requests to do something different?
Well, you won't hear the end because safety of our employees is number one and I, I, when I see that, I cringe.
So, buy the truck.
Right, so we have to look somewhere in our budget to do something else. It's, 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 it's immediate.
But you're the one that always tells me if it's not in the budget, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Right, but.
Vote for it.
But we gotta find it, we gotta find it.
So, I, I, from my point of view, I do believe Stacy is correct. But from a practical point, you, you know that it's nice to put a number behind our request. I think we do need to find funding for it before a purchase. We have just done a couple of things, we've spent about a hundred grand tonight. Some of it has been a swap, some of it is not.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it, is it easy to find these?
No.
I'm good.
No, it's not. As a matter of fact, Chris found a lot of them that were out of state, we gotta find one that's in state. This is a gas rig, so we can get away with our Air Resources Board without having to put all that compliance on it. It's ten years old, it's got.
That's pretty new.
Time on it. Not really. The, currently what we use, the loader has an OSHA-approved basket on it. It is OSHA-approved to do what we are doing. It is not something that I would allow my staff or Chris would allow our staff to be in something that is unsafe. That's not what we do. If we thought it was unsafe and OSHA thought it was unsafe, it would be parked. But it does not reach our streetlights, so we've either gotta hire somebody to come in and do our streetlights or borrow Mount Shasta's bucket to do our streetlights. But for changing the banners, we use the loader and an approved basket.
Is that Christmas lights as well?
For the decorations, yes, yeah, with that. We need, we need something to reach the light bulbs, we need to be able to change our own light bulbs and do that kind of stuff. And we need something to take care of the tree on the hill.
What does it currently cost us to rent or not rent, but to get somebody else to come in for our lights?
The cost, we're not worried about, finding them is, you can't find them.
No, you can't find them.
No, no, I'm talking about the cost to.
To borrow Mount Shasta's.
To borrow Mount Shasta's or to.
We trade off with Mount Shasta, so we have no cost there when theirs is up. But at the time of year that we need them and the big companies that can do these trees, we can't get them to come here. It's, it's not a big enough job for them to make any money. So, either they donate it to us or they charge us for an hour or something, but it takes them three or four hours to get here. They don't wanna do it.
But we use a lot of personnel time looking for them.
Oh, absolutely.
And the timing is also a piece. When we're, we're doing the trade-out of the different communication flags that we do. I think they're wonderful. The town people love that, number one, and the timing just doesn't happen, because I know one time I was asking, oh, it wasn't available in Mount Shasta, so we had to do something else. And that's, and, and that's a scary moment.
So, in looking, in finding this one, I assume that, that auction place down there in Woodland, the one that's right, RB, that one we went there, looked already?
The, the problem with those ones that I found in Woodland, they're not certified. You've gotta have certified trucks.
Okay.
That's why we can't get one from the power company, or we can't pick one up, a used one, from Caltrans. Because of the liability issues, if something happened to us, they go back to the owners.
Oh. Well, because I think that even though you say it's safe, it sure does not look safe in that other way you do it, and I'm just, I cringe when I see them like Stacy does.
I don't think a bucket truck looks safe either, but allegedly it is.
But it, but it, I don't know.
And I trust-
It's made for the job, at least.
I trust Craig's word that it is safe, but I'd also love to have that Christmas tree up on the hill fixed.
I know.
And we can't, 'cause my thought would be, can we wait till next month? And maybe you can dig around in the budget and find it. But when you find these trucks, you can't wait till next month, right?
Yeah, and I'm not even sure if this truck is still available. I mean, this is just, if, if we get approval for 65,000-plus taxes, we need to go back and look and see what they have left, and, and maybe we can find something else that might fit us a little better or something, which is what we'd like to look for. This is, this is about a price we can get one for.
Okay.
An older one. We can spend an easy 250,000 on a new-
We'd have to look a little longer for that.
Don't give Kelly anxiety.
I think the bud is what's gonna pay for it.
We need, we need other things before.
I would, I would still suggest, if, if you are saying that things are safe, I still would like a bucket truck, but I'm still willing to wait till funding is available.
I would rather give you approval and go start looking in the budget to find that money.
I, Mr. Mayor, myself, I think that, obviously, the big, you know, how do we fund it? We, we can't fund it right now. I, I think it's ridiculous to go out, to put ourselves on the line for 65,000-plus taxes when we, as Craig stated, as far as being safe, I think it is safe. I do a lot of that work myself. I'm, I'm hanging off the, you might see me out there hanging off the clock, changing the clock, working on the clock, that type of thing. It, it's what, you do what you gotta do. And we can be, you know, if we have the money, fine. But if we don't have the money, I, I, you know, I, I, you know, I, as Ron said, you know, you find, you find the money for us, and I'll be in agreement. But to go out on the line for something we're gonna use very sparingly.
Is there any capital improvement money in the 18, 19 budget?
Yes, quite a bit. We have a one-ton truck that we were going to upgrade, right?
It's being delivered tomorrow.
Okay.
I knew you were gonna get around to spending that money about as fast as you could. We-
You can't tell them to return it? Anyway.
No one's here to sign for it.
We have capital in the water and sewer, but I can't see how this would be justified in the water sewer. So, I can't suggest that we delay one of their projects. What else do you have? I don't have-
We've got a plow truck.
Yeah, two, actually. Snow plows. Our snow plows are getting aged. And the Department of Transportation is switching from cinders to, to, to liquid for de-icing purposes. And we are not ready to switch to de-icing. So, we often go to DOT to get their hand-me-downs. We do pay for them. They're, they're not free. But pretty soon, they're gonna be done with all their cinder trucks. And that's what scares us a bit. We'd have to do some investigation to find out where they're at on their transfer. But you see, if, if, if the next truck we get from them is the one that used liquid, then we have to go full steam into liquid, which means we have to have holding tanks in place where they can refill, and it has to meet EPA guidelines as having a spill-retention around it. So, the cost to us to switch from cinders to liquid is pretty high. And we wanted to get two trucks out of DOT before they ran out of cinder trucks.
And we can go back and look at the budget and see what we can move around, if that's, if that's your desire.
That is mine, because we, you can find money in different, and I, I've dealt with million-dollar budgets in companies, and you can find it if, if you look for it and, and make some decisions. We can find it. It might not be agreeable to everyone as a team, but you, you can move money around. Just whatever we have looked at, what's more important. And, and employee safety is the number one. I've always said that. And I still, and I'm not, I'm not, I, I went to OSHA with, with Home Depot, so I'm, so I'm not sure about what, what the safety piece is. I'm still uncomfortable seeing it. And I was, when I was the HR manager for the store, for stores in the area.
But Craig is saying this is OSHA, what we're doing is OSHA-approved. So, if it's OSHA-approved, we don't have a work comp issue. We don't have a negligent issue.
And how often do they do it?
We still have a budget issue.
Just, just to change the banners and-
Three, four times a year?
Banners and Christmas decorations.
Or replacing lights?
And lights.
Doesn't reach lights.
On Main Street, it was used once, I saw.
Oh, probably on Main Street. Yeah, it will on Main Street. Yeah, yeah. But you can do those with ladder deal.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to also suggest the possibility of, you know, Mount Shasta has a bucket, but you say it's broke down a lot. Maybe there's a, maybe there's a, you know, going in, going into, maybe we can get some other-
50/50?
Somebody else to, you know, that wants to join in, in helping us purchase this or sharing it, because it, as much as we're going to use it.
I agree with that completely.
Yeah, I do, too.
It really is a, it's frivolous.
We could, we could launch Mount Shasta and see if they're in the market of replacing one. I know Mount Shasta just replaced or bought a crack sealer that they've been borrowing from us for years and years and years. Yeah, they wore it out. Together, we wore it out, but they have offered back to us to borrow their new one.
Yeah.
And I think a little bit of collaboration like that makes sense for our small cities. We just don't-
We, we, we do that.
Does Wyrica have one, or we don't share with them? Do we share with them?
We have not in the past, no.
Sometimes it's distance.
Do they have a big bucket truck?
Yes.
Is there a rent-to-buy option with Solano's, the one that we did use at one time? Rent-to-buy at Solano's, that one?
No, they don't have a bucket truck.
We, we use one there.
They have. It's not a bucket truck, it's a lift.
It was a lift. It was approved lift, so. It functioned the same, so. I know there's a rent-to-buy option. I was accident, I'm, I'm looking for out of the box. So, what do we wanna do as a council?
As a council, I'm not ready to approve this. We can table this and look at it in the future. Or we can take a vote on yea or nay, but I don't think we're gonna get, I mean, it's up to, you know, we can take a vote. If we're gonna take a vote, I, I need somebody to make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase.
It's been moved and seconded for a bucket truck. Any amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No, no. Sorry.
We tried.
We did. I get it, but I trust that Craig says his people are safe.
But I would, I would like us to look further into the budget issue.
If you can find the money and, without giving up, like, something that we need.
At, at least we learned one thing by bringing it in front of you, and that is that you're not, you're not unwilling to spend $65,000 or something in that neighborhood for this type of vehicle. We didn't even know that before tonight.
We're willing to spend it, provided we can find it. Another suggestion that came out of this is the ability to maybe share costs with Mount Shasta, and spending 32 is much more attractive to me than spending 65. And possibly Dunsborough, which is another close neighbor. So.
Thank you for bringing the sensitive issue to us to look at. I appreciate that.
And I wanna thank you, actually, 'cause I really didn't ask you if it was OSHA-approved, to tell you the truth. You gotta speak up, darn it. Darn it.
I, I would vote that you trust. I don't-
I asked if it was.
Mr. Mayor, I'll say right now, volunteer right now, when we do find the money for a bucket, and we get a bucket, you know, I'll volunteer to paint the arch, if we can get to, get to the arch. I mean, that's something that we really-
Yeah, you're right.
Get that, that-
There would be a lot more uses if we had one. The trimming trees and that kind of stuff.
Yes. Onto Item D, Administration. Council will consider selecting date and time for a work-study session regarding the draft cannabis cultivation ordinance.
City Attorney has completed his work on a draft ordinance, and we're ready to proceed to have it reviewed by you, determine whether or not any additional additions and corrections have to be made to the document before we bring it to the Planning Commission for consideration. Planning Commission has pretty much filled their agendas for July and August. So, the earliest that they would even be able to consider it is September. So, there's not really an immediate need for a, a work session in July. But we wanted you to be aware that we're ready to proceed. And there are a couple of individuals out there who have a desire to submit a commercial cannabis application to the city and are waiting patiently for us to complete an ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. We have some professionals out there also that we've talked about, that we'd be partnering with this, 'cause I wouldn't want us to be in the same position as last time with submitting an ordinance or something of that nature that we forgot some of the legal things that we aren't aware of. We, and we talked about that. How, how's that gonna be in this effort?
You're doing a work session, and therefore you may allow public comment.
Okay, 'cause we have some professionals out there who know the As and Bs that we don't, still don't know, and one of our business leaders. And I hope we would look at that to partner with.
The workshop is an open session, so everybody's invited. So, I think we just need to figure out a day. We've got the, let's see, July 12th?
Is it, is it too much for us to also do it on August 2nd?
Yeah, this is huge. For cannabis cultivation, this is-
Too much.
So, what you'd be planning on is a meeting from about 3:00 to 7:00?
I'd just assume do it all at once. So, we could limit ourselves, the closed session, from 3:00 to 5:00, or whatever we decide, and then 5:00 to 7:00 would be our workshop.
I'm good with that.
We can even get pizza.
Do we need to state the times for that now, as, as we schedule the, the meeting?
Good idea, so that the public knows when to show up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I'm not gonna be here for the closed session portion.
So, are we looking at two hours for the closed session?
Yes, and amendment.
Sure.
We are.
It's gonna take that long, but that's okay.
So, we do, then we'll go, come back. Okay.
At 5:00, okay.
Okay. Closed session at 3:00 on August 2nd, and we'll look for workshop for cannabis growth ordinance at 5:00.
For cultivation, not necessarily growth, but-
Growth, cultivation. I might grow a little taller, I don't know.
If that was it, we'd all be doing it.
Onto Item E, canvas of ballots, certified election results. Council consider adoption of resolution?
I think we might have a question from an audience member on the last issue.
Somebody have a question on the last issue from the, out there?
Uh, yeah. Hi, my name is Raymond Strakel at 3038 Knight-Huck Lane. I would just ask that, whatever the most recent draft of the ordinance is available for review prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Can we do that? Yeah.
When we post the meeting agenda, we will post the copy of the draft.
Perfect.
And we'll have it available on the web?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. We need to start using, we have an interactive web. I think the mayor wants to start mouthing off. Can I do that?
Probably not a good idea.
Yeah, it is. Yes, a question?
What I said earlier about things being really crazy right now, we've had some people come in that live locally within the city limits. Does the city still allow people to come in and get a free permit to grow their personal plants in the city of Wade that has nothing to do with an ordinance?
To get six, don't they?
Right, but is there a permit or a little-
Application.
Something that they come into the city and get or ask for?
I don't think they're required to have a permit for personal use.
Yes, they are, and if they're growing in the city limits, yeah.
It's, I guess-
It's free, but, but, yeah, but we ask them to get a grow permit, yes.
Okay. So, if they go into the city, come into the city, do they go to this front window or into where Sandra and them are?
Oh, I have no idea.
Yeah, and is there a form? Do we have that available?
It's a standard application.
The front window should, should direct them to Sandy.
Okay, so, but you do have a form they can come in and ask for?
But it, it's not free.
I thought they were, I thought our, I thought our first-
Second year, it's free.
Oh, what? Okay.
First year, it's $50.
Oh, okay.
Because we, we do inspect both the Police Department and the Building Inspection Department, the Fire Department, all do inspections to determine that they are in compliance with the ordinance. But when they're coming in simply for a renewal, the renewal is free.
Now, that growth has, still has to be indoors. Am I reading that right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Or sent, or sent house or whatever you call it.
Outside, in a structure.
Greenhouse.
Yes.
Old structure.
Yes.
You inspect their house?
No, outs, their greenhouse or their structure, their gross structure, not inside their house.
Can I grow inside my house?
No.
By our ordinance, our ordinance is medicinal. It's not adult use. Our ordinance is medicinal, and you cannot grow it within your home. You can grow it within a building, are required to grow it within a building, up to 12 plants by medicinal script.
But we never wrote anything for recreation, adult use?
We have not, at this point.
You, you don't have anything in, in writing for adult use, but under the passing of state law, recreational individuals or adult use are allowed to cultivate six plants indoors without-
Up to 12, according to him, right now.
12 is medical.
Is our, is our adult cultivation ordinance gonna address that issue?
I just had directed someone to come into the office that they needed to register or talk, and I'm just making sure that I'm giving the right information, is all.
But by our ordinance, do you need a script or whatever, what do they call, a script or whatever?
Not for adult.
By our ordinance, you need a, a script for medicinal permit. But by state law, they can grow six plants within their home.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Good question. Thank you. No.
Nick Jocelyn, Monahue. I was just gonna point out, I think the difference being, even though there is that medical ordinance here, you could not grow in that system and then participate in the commercial cannabis, which is 64, which describes medical or adult use. I think this is still personal consumption, medical use, so.
Right.
I don't know if that was clear. And I would just urge you to work fast on the cultivation ordinance, or else give me a conditional use permit. Because you've given, and not already given, someone else a conditional use permit, and I would, I would abide by all the same conditions.
Okay.
We're gonna step very careful.
I, I would tell you that fast for government will not be- I, I would tell you that fast for government will not be what you consider fast.
No, I, I understand that, too.
Believe me.
If, if the planning, if the planning commission does get to view it in September and doesn't take any additional time to look at it, but immediately approves it and recommends it to the council, and the council then has first reading in October and second reading in November, the first license available would be in January. But there may be a review process that one has to go through in order to get it. I anticipate a condition use permit. So, if an application would be submitted under the ordinance, and even if the application was submitted the day after the council approved it in November, the earliest someone could have a license to start to build a building, to put it in, or to start an operation in an existing building, if there is one in the proper zone district, is likely to be January or February two thousand nineteen. And you, you may not view that as being fast, but that would be the process the city has to go through to adopt an ordinance.
So, the conditional use permit that you're speaking of was done originally, I believe, under medicinal?
Yes. Well, no, micro-business.
Micro-business?
Micro-business only can have twelve plants.
But we have given one of those?
I would, I would.
We have one of those now?
We have one of those.
I, I mean, that.
Does that mean that we can't have more of those, or what?
Does not mean that we can't have more of those.
That's what I'm, yeah, I guess, that's my point, is small business, and like Elizabeth pointed out, the kind of struggles everyone's facing with the rules kind of changing. I haven't been able to even participate in the system. Whereas before, I had had ten years where everything I had done had been tested. So, I'm ready to participate in the system, been following all the rules, everything's in place with the state, all my business structure's in place, applications are completed at the point of approval of the municipality. I, I understand the timeline, it's, is what it is.
I, I would tell you that the, the rules of the state have made it literally financially inappropriate for even the one that has a license to grow anything. Because twelve plants.
It's not sufficient.
Are insufficient to generate sufficient income to cover the expenses that the state is imposing upon growers.
I, I, I feel differently about that.
Okay.
We'll talk, we can talk later.
Mr. Mayor? Excuse me, we're, we're talking about here, with the special, special use.
Conditional use permit.
Conditional, excuse me, the conditional use. What are, why are we, Mr. Jocelyn here is, is trying to establish a business. He already has a strain. He has, what, what criteria do we use to, to use this, to hand out or to give, to, to give the conditional use?
Do, do you understand?
We're getting a little off the subject. Okay.
Yeah.
We'll call a point of order, and that's an item that we'll be, have, have to discuss at a later point. The, the, the topic before us today is selecting a date and time for a work-study session, which has been established. And then, we're onto item E, which is a canvas of the ballots to consider adopting.
On, on that date, are we gonna be discussing the, the conditional use?
We can.
We can, we can put that on for part of the work session, and was that be fine? August 2nd? August 2nd, okay. All right, thanks, Nick. So, I, I need a motion to approve the, the ballots to certify our election results.
I so move.
You get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Bob, for keeping us on track there. Onto the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they wanna pull from the consent agenda? Are you okay? I get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so move.
You get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No items removed. Staff reports, onto Kelly.
We'll make it quick. Community center is, is phenomenal. What, the, the positive response we're getting throughout the county, it will be used real, I mean, there'll be a lot of use there. We wanna thank Parks and Rec and, and Martin's board, along with Sue there, for what they've done.
Can't, can't hear you.
You can't hear me? It says it's on.
Speaking to it.
I'm not gonna eat the bloody thing.
Yes.
You might have to.
Push it, push it down, it depends where your voice carries. That's a little too far. All right. Smart pants. You don't wanna hear me anyway, I don't wanna waste. There we go, we're better. Anyway.
Give him three.
Anyway.
Stereo.
Then, our seniors transport, our bus, the bus, that's, again, creating very, very good response from the community, too. I, I keep getting a lot of input back, and I just wanna, that feedback, I want you folks to know that, that was extremely good decision that was made. Thank you. Off the freeway, we have got a couple of, well, more than two, but the, the latest two has seemed to impacted South Wade even more. People coming off the freeway now that they know that grocery outlet's there. There's a number of travelers that, a lot of people have motorhomes, and they come off the freeway. There's a number of them that do that. And, and they trade there, but a, at the same time, when they do that, it helps us with other businesses, the ones that bring us in more revenue. You know, fueling is, is, is good, sales tax on fueling. Starbucks is the other one. People are aware that it's there in South Wade, and there's other.
They add it to their signage as well.
Facility, facilities, yeah, and it's too bad that, that one doesn't light up outside.
No, but they put the, there's, there's a big one along the freeway now, says Starbucks. Next, next.
I think, was it last night Starbucks wasn't lit up? Ron brought that to my attention out there, too. But anyway, I'm just saying, good thing, good thing, keep it up, gang.
Can I ask a question? It was in the paper about the community center, the match. What is that meaning for us in looking at the, the date of it? What are those numbers like? It was in the paper that the match is still not close to being agreed upon? So, do we have a report on that?
I, I can answer that for you. The, the match grant for McConnell was actually extended to September, and they're progressing at this point. The last I heard, there was fifty-five thousand dollars or so that has come in, which in a, in a match with McConnell, that's a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We're hoping that sometime in the near future, we can still continue to enhance that. The goal is a hundred thousand, which would be two hundred thousand, so.
That has nothing to do with our completion date or opening date?
No. No.
It's just in the paper, the headline, so I think we should know here, kinda how that works.
Fortunately, Rotary Today gave another three thousand dollars to that project for the revenue from the Brew Fest that they held in May.
Nice, nice. Thank you.
Thank you. There's members of the Rotary that are hanging out here, I know, so thank you, guys.
You're the president?
Oh, that's right, you are the president. Great.
Just real quick, we've got, I'm working on a contract with the county to come in and do some chip sealing. This'll be at the end of August.
A what?
At, what?
Oh, chip seal.
Chip sealing.
Okay.
Getting some roads resurfaced that will make them last another extra ten years on them, so that's happening right now. And we're also still working on the EDA to get a commitment, to get the engineer on board and start trying to get that project up and running. It's taking us a little longer than what we had hoped, so.
I have a question. Greg?
Yes.
There in front of the high-low, there's all kinds of words painted on the, on this, what? Sidewalk graffiti. What is that for? Those are always scary to me.
That is Hunter Communication.
Oh.
And they're boring down through there. There'll be four different pits along that, along that road coming down, and they're gonna be about forty-two to forty-four inches, so they'll miss all of our stuff, we're hoping, that we found, but it's Hunter that's coming through town.
You'll know by the water running down the street.
They created quite a maze to go through.
And we, we had a meeting with them yesterday, and I requested that they shorten up those little turn lanes, try to get us in and out faster, because, and it, it's hopefully gonna be a little smoother as we go on, so.
Greg, which roads are you going to be chip sealing?
College Avenue all the way out, Siskiyou Boulevard to the high school, and South Wade Boulevard all the way through the residential, and Shastina all the way, and Blackview.
Lincoln Avenue?
No.
How about North Davis? Anything on that?
No.
Really in bad shape?
Everything is going to be out there. What we're doing right now with this chip seal is we're saving our better streets that need, that need the oil. Now, the, the stuff we did in Angel Valley and the pavement we did up around the school and all that, we'd like to be able to pick that up, Park Street, Alamo, and that kinda stuff next year, and, and try to get some more of these surfaces that we've paid good money for to get the good asphalt in here sealed, because they're drying out really fast, so.
So, you said Siskiyou to the high school, but.
Or to the college.
Siskiyou to the college or Shastina?
Yeah, Siskiyou to the college.
Also, they're, they're, those are heavily used streets.
Yes, they are. Yeah. Yep.
Martin?
I don't necessarily have anything for the PD, but if I could just continue on a little bit with the rec department. They're hoping to have a proposal to the city for the August meeting, where they can approach with some planning for programs for seniors. And Brianna, our program specialist, has done a lot of work on putting together the next year's worth of programming that she's planning, and she will approach you guys for some assistance with funding if possible.
Can I ask a question? There's been questions from the community. That's gonna be cost-effective based on our, our, our population. So, not saying it's higher low, but everyone can participate. That, that's the direction or focus we're looking at.
As far as, as the senior funding is focused on seniors locally here, other people we've talked about, other, other visitors to our community that are outside of the district would be required to pay some type of a, of a fee for that. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, I was looking for local people who aren't seniors.
Well, all they're, all they're working for, that they will approach you for, is senior, but there is multitude of, of young and teenage and, and adult-type programming that she's working on as well. And, and she's looking at really kicking that off in January as a plan, with the community center being ready to go by then. Earlier, you asked about the community center. I think we all understand that it's gonna be done before January, and we just wanna make sure that we're ready for all the programs before we just open the doors and, and, and do things. So, so we may be having activities prior to January, which is more likely, but to really have a kickoff date, January is what we're looking for.
As a structure, are these organizations, such as, say, Boosters comes down, Boosters wants to put on an event, that free to the local communities, or is there, is, do we have rental charges and all of those things?
There will be, there will be some fees, and we are basing our fees, we just met today, actually, and, and we're basing our fees primarily off of in-district and out-of-district, but we're focusing on trying to give flexibility to youth programs, and in particular, have, have opportunities where those, those students aren't paying much money, if any.
And wasn't there something about, I don't wanna throw it in, but was something, if people outside the area come, then they're, have an additional charge, or something of that sort?
Yeah, as an example, the main, main room, the big room, there is a local in-district fee, which is about half of what the out-of-district fee would be.
Totally appropriate. Great. Thank you.
Somebody's messing around with my screen here. I'm, I'm used to looking at a blank screen, and I'm going, what the hell?
I'm trying to get ready for my presentation. We're gonna be here till nine.
I'll be back, I'm gonna go get dinner real quick. So, I noticed there was, there's another presentation, but there was an email lately about, there was some kind of five thousand dollar match or something, are you gonna go into that?
No, I only gave it to you and Sue.
Okay.
And Martin, and wanted to know if you wanted me to go after it.
Oh, okay.
I, I will tell you that Casell is giving away three five thousand dollar grants for public, um, community project. And I was wondering if the Recreation and Parks District wanted to come up with a proposal of something that would be five thousand dollars, like putting AV equipment in the, in a conference room for training, or something of that nature, and come up with an idea that we could submit to Casell, to see if we can get them five thousand dollars.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I'll speak to you later about that, okay. Is your report done, Martin?
It is.
Sandy? Sandra?
He's fine. I just wanna comment that Monday starts the nomination period for pulling papers for elections, so if you are interested in running for council, the papers are available at my office from the July sixteenth through August tenth.
Oh, I can get them from you? I don't have to go to Wyegah?
No, I have them available.
Oh, heck, yeah. Ron?
First of all, I wanna tell you that I, I told Martin about a program that Modesto has instituted, where they've taken one of their CSO officers and assigned that officer as the homeless coordinator. And that individual has their, their job, has gone out to contact every homeless individual within their community, and tried to find out what their needs were, and tried to, tried to get them lined up with people who can maybe address some of those needs. He's looking into that program to see whether or not that is something that we can model after. Secondly, I met yesterday with a representative from Gov Office, they're the ones that host our webpage. I've asked them to update our website so that it's mobile. Right now, you can get it on the computer. It doesn't look very, very good on a, on a, on a cellphone. And obviously, people are, are using multiple devices to access information, and we want to upgrade ours. The other thing is, we haven't upgraded it for six years, and we'd like to freshen the I still need to get a couple photographs of council members for that, that product. The last thing that I wanted to tell you about is that, I wanted to tell you about what some cities are doing in regard to housing. In two thousand and sixteen, San Francisco and Alameda County went to their voters and got voter approval to build affordable housing, and to issue a geo-bond issue for the purpose of constructing that affordable housing. In June of this year, Emeryville also submitted a request. The, I'll tell you about the Emeryville one, because there may be a model that we could follow. The Emeryville used Article thirty-four of the California Constitution, which the voters can give to you the authority to build affordable housing. The, they asked for and got permission to build two hundred units, and they asked for and got voter approval with a single question, to. Uh, to issue fifty million dollars in general obligation bonds in order to do that project. City of Berkeley is proposing one for November. Their council has just voted on it. Uh, Santa Rosa is considering one. There may be others out there that I'm unaware of. But, um, I can tell you that, when we went through the four public hearings that we did as we were doing our general plan update. What we were told very strongly from our citizens, and hundreds participated in the, uh, in those public hearings. That we needed housing of all types and all costs, um, within the community. Quite honestly, when the fire occurred, although we lost a hundred and fifty-four structures. And most of them were single family, we received only eighty single family that got rebuilt. Fifty of the sixty that did not get rebuilt were rental housing, so we have an acute need. We've lost fifty rental units within the community. We went out with, uh, Retail Coach. And we looked at the number of jobs that we had within our community. And they told us we had one thousand five hundred and three jobs. Now, we're only looking at the employers within the community. So, since Roseburg is not in the community, we're not looking at their jobs. And we're not looking at who our people work for. So, when you look at that data, it says that there are only two jobs in, in, uh, um, in our community. For, uh, timber products. That doesn't mean there are only two people that work in timber products. It just means that there are only two jobs in timber products within our community. But when you take.
I, do you mean timber, the timber industry?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, there was, there's a company in Timber Products and I didn't know if that's what you were.
No. It's the timber industry. If you take our population base, right now it's two thousand eight hundred. If you take out of the, uh, census data, the students at the college which are counted as our residents. The students at the high school, the students at the elementary school, children that are too young to attend school. And individuals who have retired, we don't have fifteen hundred and three people left. So we have people that are driving into town to, to work and driving back home. Now, that's okay if that's the lifestyle that they want. But we have some people who are living in Wyegah, working for Crystal Geyser, that like to be in Weed. We can't find any place to live. The, uh, the citizens told us though, we think we have enough low income housing. What we need is housing for all the rest of us. Well, I wanna show you the, the income level. That qualifies for the affordable housing. If you went out with a bond issue and built it. And that's what the Siskiyou County line is. And if you look at what is considered low income, the first column is a single individual can make thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And still qualify to rent those properties. If you go across the board and you get to the fifth column. A family of four, I'm sorry, the fourth column. If a family of four can make forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars in family income. And still qualify to rent those properties. It continues on depending on the size. But if you get all the way to an eight person family, the income level is sixty-three thousand two hundred and fifty. I'm suggesting to you that the income limitations for that type of a housing program. Where the city would ask for its voters for permission to build housing and to issue general obligation bonds. For the purpose of building that housing. That that housing would meet, the, the people that could qualify to rent those properties. Would cover three quarters of the people that live in our community and perhaps even more. This is not low income section eight housing. This is housing for the rest of us. Just exactly what our citizens asked for. And it's possible to do it. And you have the authority to do it on your own or perhaps with others. I'm meeting with the city managers from Wyegah, Mount Chasta, and Dunsmere tomorrow. To determine what interests they have. I broached the subject with our supervisor, Mike Kopsef, at our agenda, um, meeting. I've talked to the mayor of Tulley Lake and to the mayor of Doris. And there appears to be a housing problem everywhere within our county. If, if the county led the effort and if it was a multi-jurisdictional housing authority. That was doing this, seeking voter approval for, from everyone within the county, quite honestly. There are advantages in having it not just be the city of Weed. And that's the reason why I'm trying to encourage others to really consider doing something. Governments are not really good at business. We're not good, we would not be good at managing an apartment complex. Renting out the units or accept, or, or collecting rents. There are nonprofits, Chip, um, the California Housing Initiative Program, which is a nonprofit out of, out of Chico. There's another nonprofit out of Ukiah. That would be interested in contacting, contracting with either the city of Weed or multi-jurisdictions. In order to manage, maintain these properties, collect the rents. But they don't want one project. Because they would like to have the salary of the manager spread over three, maybe more projects. So that the total cost of overhead for the projects could be lowered. If you're a bond buyer, um, you might have an interest in, in buying bonds that are simply coming from the city of Weed. We'd have to do a feasibility study, there's some cost to that, in determining that there is a need and that we think we can rent them. But there's a risk that we might not fully rent out and that the revenue stream might not be as strong as anticipated. And therefore, the, uh, the interest rates on those bonds would be a little bit higher. We could get the interest rate a little bit lower if we had six projects. Because if one didn't actually rent out to the level that we anticipated, you still got the other five to rely upon as a bond buyer. The third thing is that we do not have a bond rating as a city. And quite honestly, we can't get a bond rating for our city. So if we issued bonds, we would end up probably having to do an insured, uh, issue. We'd have a bond underwriter. We'd have a bond attorney. And each of those things would have a cost to them. If you go with the county, if the county is lead agency, the county already has a bond rating. See, you don't have to buy the insurance. And if six projects are hiring one bond attorney. Then the cost of issuance for each individual project, it's, it's not six times what you'd pay for one. There might be slightly different higher amount, but it's probably two or three percent, not six hundred percent. So, the cost would be lower in the issuance. So there's a reason why I'm trying to get others involved, even though I know I could do it for the city of Weed alone. And I wanted you to be aware of these factors. Because if you hear things out there about, oh, they're doing another low interest housing project like Siskiyou Gardens or something like that. The Ukiah Group, for example, is the owner of Siskiyou Gardens. So, um, you know, if they hear that we're talking to them about probably, um, managing a facility for us. They might think that the facility is gonna be managed in the same way Siskiyou Gardens has been managed and therefore, um, there may be. Some things that you, having the information, can help ease the minds of some people when they hear some of these things. This is not low income housing. It's not section eight housing. It's workforce housing. And that's a term I'd like to use. Constitution requires us to use the term affordable housing.
And this is what was in the, the Emeryville audience that I'm looking at, that you sent the information from the conversation with Michael Kopsef? Has he responded yet? Because it came from a county.
Yeah, he wants to have a meeting, um, and that's part of the agenda tomorrow. He wants to have one other supervisor. They can only have two supervisors, unless it's an official meeting. That he'd like to have one other supervisor present, um, to hear how much interest there is or not. In all of the cities, especially the, the four bigger cities. He wants to hear if we have some interest in it.
And you're, and you're planting the seed because we're looking at probably for the voters to back this, so it's supported that way based on the e- email content. Is, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, so we're, you know, we're, we're pushing ahead to see if there's other interests. I can tell you that. First indication from, uh, um, Wyegah was that they weren't interested. And then I talked to the mayor and she said, we're absolutely interested in housing. I don't know where you got the idea that we're not. But, um, each city has a different interest. Doris, for example, has an interest in, uh, migrant housing. Tulley Lake believes that they can enhance their schools by having people that might work in Klamath Falls, but they're twenty-four miles away in Tulley Lake. And they might be interested in being in Tulley Lake because of the gang problem in the high school in Klamath Falls. So they're looking more at single family type housing. Wyegah is interested in affordable first home buyer housing, okay?
And, and didn't our, the, I'm sorry, and add to it, didn't the owners, folks of the Siskiyou Gardens propose another, um, upscale type of unit that they had a location? They wanted to work for the city. That was a couple of years ago. Is that still on the table?
We've talked to them about whether or not they would go for some, um, money. It's called home, H O M E. It's a program of, uh, of the state. Which you have to compete for and there's a point system. And, uh, they have to spend money to get far enough along in the planning process to be competitive. But what they told me was that, the way in which the points are assigned, there's apparently a hundred and forty-eight points. And the way in which the points are assigned is such that every applicant ends up getting the full amount. And then it becomes a little bit political about who gets the money. And they were concerned that, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to qualify to get the money from the state. In that grant program. And if they did the project, one of the requirements would be that forty percent of the housing would have to be very low income. Um, essentially the, the same limit, the income levels as a section eight property. So.
And, and I just asked just to, 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 to bead the conversation, because we've talked about it before. So I know everybody doesn't wanna hear that, but I do, so.
Yeah.
All your smiles, whatever.
It, it makes it, there we don't have to go to the public for a vote, but we're not actually accomplishing what the public said they wanted. Uh, they said that they thought we had enough of the deed restricted low income, that we needed housing for the rest of us. And forty percent would have to be deed restricted to that low income. But if that's the only source, or that turns out to be the best source, um, as the council thinks about this. Then we will try to do that project. But they, they, uh, they were a little hesitant to spend money on that project. And what they really wanted me to do was to offer that the city would upfront some money in order to get them to the point that they could. Apply for the grant funds. And I didn't know that we wanted to do that.
Bonding is a little bit of a better vehicle. It means we take care of our own stuff. I just.
Yes.
I like taking care of our own.
And it, and it, um, according to Emeryville. We could use it not just for rentals, but for saleable property. So I might be able to get that townhouse, two-story, two-bedroom, twelve-hundred square foot with a single car garage. At an affordable price. Now, the problem of course is that, right now contractors are at about a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So a twelve-hundred square foot townhouse unit could easily be, be priced between a hundred and sixty and a hundred and eighty thousand. The question is, is that affordable? It appears to be.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It appears to be because I, any, any house that is in the two hundred to two hundred and twenty thousand, single family house range. Those are going on the market on Friday and they've got a contract out on by Monday. So, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand.
You put something at one eighty? You're gonna put it on the market at eight AM and it's gonna be gone at three?
The other thing is, I talked to Kevin, uh, Demiris. And he's a little busy at the moment with, uh, um, with the fire, even though they're not a, an emergency response agency. He says it's gonna be a couple of weeks before he can get some information back to me. But he said they do have a first time homeowners program. Where they don't give the money, but they would guarantee the mortgage to the lender. Which would allow people to get into the housing with zero down. And, uh, and it allowed them to qualify, um, maybe with a little less income than what they would normally have to have. If they were trying to meet the normal qualification requirements. So, um, you know, I'm exploring a lot of different avenues at the moment. I want you to know I'm putting a lot of time into that. And, uh, and I hope you'll forbear because I think that, um, I think that Weed is ready to grow. I've heard from a lot of our businesses that they're having trouble hiring people. And that, um, they have offered jobs which were promotions and good promotions to people. Who came from other locations in the state. Who came up and were interested in the job at the salary they were offering. Looked at housing and told them they weren't interested in taking the job. So, you know, we need to address this. It's not just economic development and getting jobs and getting tax base. We really need to, we need to do something with housing too. And I'm sorry I took so long. And, uh, I didn't keep you till nine.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have.
Are you done with your work? Did you have a question? Are you done with your board? Did you have a question?
I have a question for Ron that I just want to, clarification, answer yes or no, because I want it to be on the record. The stage that the city of Weed purchased was or was not purchased with grant money?
Half of it.
Half of it. So.
You paid the other half.
All right. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
It was just an issue over the Fourth of July. They'll get over, everybody will get over it. You want to take this home?
Yes, I move. Are we, if we're all tied? Bob didn't have anything?
Oh, Bob. We want something.
Wait, let me turn my microphone on. I moved to adjourn. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.